Good. All set.
Okay, we'll start the meeting. Call the meeting to order at 6:38 PM on Monday, December 20. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for moving around your schedule. Apologize again for the mishap. But thank you for being here. Do we have anyone present to speak?
I think Chris Likely is the only one here, so I don't know if he has anything to say or if he wants to wait until the RFP.
I am here, hi.
Hi, Chris.
I'll wait.
There you go.
Okay, is anybody else? Would like to speak?
Nope, the rest of it is just the committee members, so you're good to go.
Okay. Chairperson report, I just want to say we did hire a recording secretary. Her name is Nicole Busco. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight, but she will be doing the minutes to this meeting and through the video and those will get published. Next meeting agenda item is the approving of the minutes. So we have three sets of minutes, the regular SBC. From October 20th and November 17th, and then we also have a SBC land assessment subcommittee meeting that was held on December 1st. So let's start with the SBC meeting minutes of October 20th. Is there a motion on the table for the approval of those minutes? Anne? Second?
A second.
Thank you, Ralph.
I have no discussion to add, so.
A discussion, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, discussion? Hey, let's take a vote on favor of approving the meeting minutes, the SBC regular meeting minutes of October 20th. Say aye.
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 Brianna has her hand up, I don't know why.
Any.
She's muted.
Yep, that's why. She's, that's a aye. Yeah, she's not feeling well. She's not feeling well tonight, but she emailed me before, so. All in favor, everybody said aye. Any nays or abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Next regular SBC meeting minutes of November 17th. Is there a motion on the table to approve those minutes? Anne, thank you. Is there a second? Peter, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes of November 17th, 2021, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Okay, one last one. SBC land assessment subcommittee meeting minutes from December 1st. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
A moment. Sorry, Mike, I beat you.
That's fine.
All right, so.
Job is to get it done, right?
Ralph for first and Mike McCoo second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, without discussion.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion, I'm sorry.
We're late, we already voted.
All right, any, any abstentions? Anne, you're abstaining?
You gotta do a roll call those then.
Okay. Okay. So I'll say for myself, approve. Anne is an abstain. Ralph?
Aye.
Aye. Peter?
Aye.
Aye. Mike?
Aye.
Brianna?
Aye.
Gary?
Aye.
Justin?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next agenda item is communications. I just have one thing to report. We did get a copy of a deed for a new piece of, I don't know much about it, but it was something that the first selectmen's office copied me in on. And it's for information for our land assessment subcommittee to just consider along with the other town-owned properties. So I forwarded that to you, Mike, and we, no other communications to report. Our next, next item, subcommittee report. So we have two subcommittees currently. One is the land assessment. Subcommittee. And then. I'm drawing a blank.
Communications.
Communications, subcommittee meeting? Is that what, is that what we're calling it? Yeah.
We did not meet.
Yeah, I, I think the item above it threw me off, so, okay, committee.
Catherine, can you hear me?
As you guys know, we had a meeting and the meeting mat's already approved, so.
Catherine, your connection is really weak and broken up. Even more so now.
Look, it froze.
Somebody want to take over while I log off? Let me, let me hang up.
I'll do, yeah, I can do the. I can do the subcommittee report if you want. Okay, so land assessment subcommittee, we had one meeting in between.
This.
Narrowed down.
Wait one second.
Hold on.
You want me to play the Jeopardy music?
If I had it recorded, I would.
There's a 14-year-old singing upstairs in my house, so I have background music.
That's your end, Mike.
Yeah. In the meantime, I'll apologize for my tardiness. I was helping one of my children who had hacked into my Amazon account, trying to fix his Amazon account. I was helping him get out of my Amazon account and fixing my password back to what it's supposed to be. And, and then the other computer was being occupied by someone doing homework.
Time to change your password.
Yeah, he, he changed it on me. I didn't. It's a complicated story.
I'm sure.
All right, here comes Catherine to see if she can get a good connection. Picture's clear, Catherine. Yeah.
Now, can we hear you?
Doesn't show a mic yet, so.
No, not yet.
She can hear us. The advantages and disadvantages of Zoom here.
Okay, I can hear you, Catherine.
We can read lips though, huh, Ralph?
Not very well.
Catherine, whatever you're on, if your picture works, I wonder if you can use the phone just to dial in to the. To the. Agenda, we'll see if that's what she's doing now. She's trying something different now.
Is that better?
We'll see. All right, can you hear us, Catherine?
Yep.
Okay. So want me to do the subcommittee report for land?
Sure.
Okay, so we have met, we've gone over the mates, we took the document you had seen before in the full meeting and. Sorry, fire department scanner, hang on. Okay. Went through it and cleaned up all the repetition from the various different checklists and added age that was a scoring matrix. So it's on a separate, if we decide we don't like the scoring or if we want to modify it later, we won't disturb the main page of data. So essentially, the main page of the spreadsheet that you saw before is cleaned up and now it will essentially be the. The attributes of the property will be on the main page and that way it won't get confused with scoring. It'll just be the information we gathered. The scoring sheet will be separate and that will do the numerical scoring, if you will, the prioritizing. And that way, by keeping them independent, if we have to look at different information, one has altered the other, I guess, if you will, or because they're separate, you could work with either one. And. We had a couple of miscues on getting our meetings set up and timing. I misunderstood a couple of emails, but we will meet soon and we'll test the metrics on a couple of the town-owned properties because they're easy for us to get access to. And we don't need to be an executive session or anything like that to look at a current town-owned piece of property. We just need to try testing it out, so it'll be a more relaxed atmosphere and then we'll get moving on the rest of it. I also have gone with inspiration and tutoring I had gotten from Phil quite a while back. I've gone back through the list of town-owned property and there are, I think, 52 parcels. And a lot of them are irrelevant, you know, they're not in any way eligible for this project, but they are listed as town-owned properties. So we'll make sure they're on a list somewhere so that if anyone says, well, what did you, you know, there are 50 other pieces of property that the town owns, what did you do? We can just say, well, here's the list of all the things that we did not spend time on and here's the reason why. So that's the, that's the update. You're muted, Catherine.
Catherine, you're muted.
Yeah. I'm gonna try and help her out, see if this helps. Nothing. Oh, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Is that better?
The audio is better, yes.
Great. Thank you. Any better?
No. Turn off your camera, Catherine, and see if, see if it's less of a drain on your connection. See if you can just get your microphone.
Stop video, upper right corner.
All right, how about now?
Sounds good.
It, it's quite delayed, though.
It's much clearer though.
The next few items are. Though the next few items, I think you will be talking about, so I'm wondering if, if it makes sense for you to just take the 7A and then 8.
Yeah, I can start 7. So 7 is, is old business, is the review draft request for the proposal for an owner's project manager. Gary, Ralph, Catherine and I spent some time on a draft RFP. It went out to all of you. The raw draft that we started with, we sent out to CSG and Colliers and we got feedback from, from both Chris, likely and Ken. And so we took their feedback and we met again as a little kind of mini group and went through all of their recommendations and then basically took their recommendations. And it inserted, I would say, probably 99% of them into adjusting the document to, into what you now have, what was put in front of you. So we emailed that out to you, I think it was Friday, with all the changes in it. And so I'm not sure, you want it on my screen, what would be the easiest way? Do you want to ask questions about it? What, what would you like to do?
Phil, I have a comment.
Yeah.
I think you. I think. You could put it up on your screen and just go over the, the scope of work items, a few of those. Like, and maybe just talk about the different phasing. I'm trying to call in right now, so hopefully that will help.
Yeah. All right, so. Just to, just to walk through the document real quick and hopefully you had a chance to look at it. We, we wrote and Ralph wrote most of this, had a good introduction for the document. And it goes into the scope of services. This is where we probably spent our, the most amount of time. And we reviewed several different documents to get to this point. And put it into a pre-refereendum phase one, a phase two for pre-refereendum, and then a phase three. And then this post, obviously, referendum phase one is, is if, if everything went through. So the, we got a variety of feedback from. Both groups and we had merged some of these items together. Ralph or Gary, I'm not sure if you want to add anything to this, but I, hopefully, this is the bulk of the work. And the majority of this, again, is, is whether it's a, it's the evaluation to get to some ideas with some, some dollars attached. Whether it's new or a renovation, onsite or offsite. Let's see if this is Catherine.
You are muted, you can mute.
And so those are the, the options there. I don't know if you want me to, to go through them. This right here was merged together and basically, you're going to hear later on about a capital improvement request. And when we talk about some of the funding that the committee may need, you can reflect back to this to say, this might be some of the funding that might be needed in the future to evaluate and, and keep the process going. There's a qualification section and it basically just walks through what we are looking for in, in an owner's project manager. One of the things we asked about was having a pre-K, someone who has some experience with a pre-K through eighth grade, you know, with a consolidation of some sort. And so the qualifications would be in there. We have the right to amend or, or terminate the RFP. Basically, if we found something, as we got proposals, we can adjust it. You can always update the RFP and put it back out. So you have that. The RFP will be on the town's website and the Department of Administrative Services, the, where the grants are. They have a site where most people, I, I know a lot of these services, CSG and Colliers probably look there daily. And so that's where the grant would be up or the application would be uploaded there as well, which is typical. You have all the directions for how to respond to the grant there and it's, it's very specific. It says where to submit the proposals.
Phil?
Yes.
Page, back up to page four.
Yep.
Bottom. Responses must be received by January 14th, 2 PM. Postmarks prior to the submission deadline do not satisfy this condition. I have a problem with the way that's worded, because that implies that even if it was received by January 14th, 2 PM. It's postmarked prior to, but it would, would, would not be accepted. So if it was postmarked before January 14th, received before January 14th, then that should be a valid proposal. The wording kind of precludes anything postmarked before.
Yep.
January 14th, and I, I don't like that. I think we should massage that a little bit.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I agree on a technicality, that is what it's saying, but I think it's easy to fix where we could say. The first sentence is still true, responses must be received by January 14th, 2 PM, regardless of postmark date. Or something to that effect. All we're trying to say is that people who like to say, well, I got it postmarked in time, we're telling, doesn't matter.
I agree with you, Mike.
We're, we're telling them, we want it in by this time regardless of your postmark.
Like that?
Yeah.
Regardless of post, postmark date, I think we'd go better.
Yeah, yeah, even better, postmark date, beautiful.
Yep. So typical is if there's any questions, they get, and answers out, it goes out to anybody who, it goes back into the RFP. So there's an amendment section in here as well. It would go out to the, it would go to one email address. People are not supposed to contact other individuals of the committee. It's supposed to go directly to the address that's on there, so any questions are here. The one thing I caught afterwards, Catherine, that is that typically we put a date in there, you know, all questions should be submitted by. I'm not sure if you want to.
Yeah, we can talk about that, can you hear me?
Yes.
Maybe a week before. They're due.
All right, when you move on to questions and amendments. That doesn't give you a lot of time to respond to any questions.
Yeah, I can, you know, I can go into other RFPs and see what's typical. I don't know that off the top of my head, if you're okay with going off of what's typical. I don't know who else, if, if Gary, you have any thoughts on that? Or Catherine?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think a week to 10 days is plenty of time. I mean. You know, I don't think we're going to get any questions that, you know, are earth-shattering. I think they'll just be more technical questions. So as long as we, I'd, I'd say as long as we can get back to people with a week, so maybe. If we say 10 days and then we try to get back to them with a week left in the, you know, before the 14th, that works.
This, this is in the next line, too.
I.
I'm.
Days in that line.
I'm questioning the five days. Catherine, if you're going to respond to these questions in writing, which you should be. The answers to those questions need to be shared with everyone who's submitting a proposal. And if you have. Five days in which to answer the question, you are not giving the respondents adequate time to see how it affects their proposal. So if you respond to questions on January 13. And you put that out as an addenda, which it should be. How much time do you give any other possible respondents to see how it affects their proposal? If at all? I, I don't think, five days before, I think all questions should be answered.
So Ralph, are you suggesting we push it out each?
I'm not sure what you're going to push out. All I'm saying is. Can you answer, can you respond to all questions immediately? I'm not so sure you're going to be able to. I think you need to think this out. From a timeframe standpoint, and keep in mind the people who are submitting RFPs.
So what day do we, what date do we think is reasonable to get this out the door?
Sorry for making you dizzy.
To get what out the door, Mike?
If, if we're on the timeline that's in here, what day, how would we expect this to be out on the street?
Right, the intent of, of showing this was not to edit it. We, we had spent weeks going back and forth on all this. It, it wasn't meant to be.
That's, that's. I'm sorry, that's, that, that's irrelevant. We need a reasonable timeframe for any.
It was meant to be approved, so we can, can about here is.
Catherine, are you hearing us? Because you're pretty broken up. I think we seem to have lost Catherine again.
Yeah, I, I don't. I, I don't know what's going on. My connection, I'm sorry.
I don't think it's. It would be too overly challenging. If it's five days. Before the due date, if we were to have. Those questions are due, are, are, are their, questions are really basically due by Monday. To meet the following day, answer them and put an addenda out. We're not talking about a 20-page addendum. Here, we're talking about any clarification on any items that they have questions. We should be able to do that in one day. And turn them around. So if we schedule the meeting now to say, you know, because I'm looking back at five days. I mean, if I'm looking at the calendar and it's due on the 14th, right, questions have to be in here by this Monday.
Go ahead, Gary, you should be on mute. Could we empower the committee to answer those questions or do we need to bring that back to the full, do we need to bring all the questions back to the full committee or would be, people would be willing to empower the subcommittee to do that?
Would be fine with the subcommittee.
That's what I would recommend, Gary.
I agree, I agree.
I agree, I agree. All all I'm saying though is that. Answers to questions need to be posted as an addenda so that all of the respondents have an opportunity to 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 determine how it may affect their. Proposal. And if if you do it just briefly before the due date for a proposal. You you're really not helping yourself out as far as getting a a a comprehensive, complete proposal. And if they don't. Respond to those questions and answers. Um, does that disqualify them? I don't know.
How about um, what if we were to put a time on that date that that five days you say you put the actual date in? And the time and you make it noon or something like that, noon eastern. And then you set a subcommittee meeting for four o'clock that afternoon or whatever it is, whatever the subcommittee can do. You take the anything that came in by noon, you answer it right away, you send it out that night as an addenda. That would give the respondents four remaining days.
It's fine. So any questions need to be received by the tenth?
Well, yeah, I'm not looking at a January calendar, so I don't know the exact days, because we were talking about business days.
Yeah, four fourteenth is a Friday. Tenth is a Monday.
Right, so you would say by noon on the tenth.
Then just push it out a week. Push it out until the the twenty first.
Push what out?
The due date.
I thought you didn't want to do that.
You won't be able to, if you do that, you're not gonna meet until February second.
Do we have a choice?
Yeah, I I think we do exactly what they just said. Uh, any questions from respondents, no later than January tenth end of business day. And we do exactly what Mike just said. We schedule a meeting for Monday. To review the questions and what Gary said is the sub, and it's not even a subcommittee. It's the group that worked on the RFP. The group that worked on the RFP meets on Monday. We answer the questions, we put them into an addendum and we publish it out and then they have the rest of the week.
So we're we're gonna schedule a meeting for January tenth at um six P M. You're saying end of business day, so. We can't meet until that time is.
Sorry, I meant the seventh. I was trying to back it up, Ralph, so you made it the Friday. So that would allow us to meet as an a noon, so we could schedule this, the the questions is not the end of the day on business day on January seventh. Would be the Friday, then we would then answer them on Monday. That would probably allow us to do a a middle of the day meeting. If that makes sense.
Well, that makes more sense.
Like it.
Anybody have any issues with it as it is? And I'll put that in the yellow up here, just make sure it's clear. Both places.
Phil, just a question procedurally, whatever um. Whatever means that this RFP is distributed, would you then distribute the addendum? In that same means, so that whoever, you may not know who all is bidding on it. Right, because they may have not had any questions until they see the new questions.
We have no way of tracking who this RFP goes out to.
It's an easy solution. You just put it on the website and you tell everybody, direct everyone to the website. That's all, that's all you need to do.
That's that's what I was going for. Right, okay, good.
And I think it says it already that though, that's exactly where it would be posted. And the the people that are responding to this, this isn't their first rodeo. They look at these sites often and they know where where to look and they know if there's where the addendum would be.
Excellent.
Sorry, Catherine, I I couldn't respond to that. It was a wicked echo. I know she was trying to get back in. Um, any other items here as far as and I can.
I I was.
Sorry.
Yeah.
You with us, Catherine?
Can you go to the schedule part?
I'm not sure where that is. What what section, what page?
Where we gave an overall schedule of the project.
I don't know if um there is an overall schedule of the project, the dates are on listed on the um. In the due dates and things like that.
Okay.
We we don't have any kind of a graphical timeline.
No, we asked them, we asked them to create one.
Right, I I I thought we were gonna put something in there about the grant application.
No, I thought we said no, because someone might say it's it's doable soon and some might say no. We, that's why we we were gonna have them. Develop their own timeline. Sorry for making you dizzy. I'm just trying to scroll to the right spot.
No, that's okay. So do we wanna jump into discussion before we vote?
We're not done.
What other feedback do you you have from the on the document?
At seven.
Yep.
Interviews will be conducted in person or via Zoom on January twenty-sixth and twenty-seven. So if we get these on the fourteenth. Then we have. Twelve business days to review. If y'all are comfortable with that, fine, but I I I'm not sure. And then we're going to award. Or notice of award on February second. Which is only. Two biz, three business days after we're done reviewing them.
Peter?
Well, just a question, what, once we have all of the. The bids and they've been interviewed, will our full committee have a chance to look at the field and see who we like or? Or so 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 forth? Is is that kind of a part of the process here? Based on recommendations from some like kind of subcommittee that's working on it, just. Will we get to do that in our full meeting in the?
If if I could answer that, yeah, I was just gonna say, so Peter, we talked about that. We. We we said that we'd probably come with a recommendation. We we'd hope to come with a recommendation of one firm. It might be two, depending on how it goes, and then have the committee, you know, approve that hopefully.
Gotcha. You you'll pair it down and bring it to the some finalists to the committee.
Right, yes, one or more.
Thanks, Gary. That's helpful.
Peter. So we did discuss that part of it and um the videos of the interviews will be available for the entire committee. They want to review those.
Wow, great. Thank you, Catherine.
But assuming that we do it via Zoom.
Well, we could record it even if it is in person.
So we've got a camera capable of recording this and posting it on um YouTube or something? I I don't know what kind of facilities we have at the town office.
We'll figure it out.
It's not very definite.
Yes, we do.
Well, the town meetings are on YouTube, so they must be doing it somehow.
No, it's it's definitely.
Okay, but as far as the timelines, then on page seven, everyone's comfortable with that? Just asking the question.
Nobody else is chiming in, Ralph, so I I'm assuming, yes.
Well, it's that or they don't know what to say.
I guess, does does the subcommittee have enough? Do their work and get back to us so we can.
What was that question, Peter?
Does the subcommittee in this time, which I'm confused about, I'll admit, have enough time to review the. Applicants and and narrow down the field and make recommendations to the full board. Is there enough time for you for that to happen? I guess is what I'm asking. Or do you need more?
I think so.
Go ahead, Mike.
I think there are two possibilities on how I would imagine that would resolve. One is that. The process moves very quickly and smoothly. The smaller group. Um, sees uh the path ahead clearly and they call special meeting if they have to. So that we can keep the timeline so that the main group can meet and essentially endorse the decision. Which would then allow the notice of award to be issued, because I do agree the full committee should be the one that approves. Um, or the other potential path here is that the process is complicated. Maybe for a good reason, because there are good questions that need to be answered. And the notice of award is only approximately February second. If that needs to push out a few days, it gives time to get to a regular meeting of this full committee. And then we we endorse the recommendation or whatever happens and um. Then that notice of award might go out on February tenth instead of February second. Um, it's a very regular thing in contracting that the notice of award is delayed or you have to wait a few days. To hear what's going on and everyone just sort of sits expecting that they have to wait a little bit.
That's true.
As long as it's not egregious, then, you know, it just, we do what we need to do.
I think the February second date was picked because that's a regular meeting of the S B C.
Right, correct. So so if it all goes well, we endorse on the second and then on the third, the um. Notice, initial notice or tentative notice or whatever, however it's gonna be worded, it can go out. Basically, it could, hey, we like you and um stand by for further information.
Exactly.
Yep.
Page nine. Top two paragraphs. I don't think they're needed at all. Well, no, wait a minute, wait a minute. When did the payments get moved to page nine? Uh, that's because of the edits you've made so far tonight, Phil?
Yep, yeah.
Okay, town inspection of work and rejected work or materials. That's not even relevant. There's no work being done other than uh helping us get to where we need to get to for referendum. So what work are we going to inspect? That that that's specifically. Uh, more of a a contractor clause than it is a um. A a a project manager as we've structured it. Same thing with rejected worker materials. I really don't think both of those paragraphs are relevant to this RFP. Then when you get down to subcontracting.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Ralph.
So I'm just. I think Ralph makes a good point, but I'm just trying to play it out before we wipe those out of there.
I understand.
Is it possible that the um, the people who we would be engaging through this tool. Would end up doing some actual hard services, like they might be out on a piece of property. Doing assessments or something like that. Um, if if they're gonna be doing that or subcontracting in, then does that change our perspective of this, these two? Contract. Or are they gonna be only doing administrative work and and not in any way doing physical on the groundwork? I don't, I don't know.
Anybody have a problem with we uh if we ask Chris likely?
That's what I was gonna suggest.
Okay, we did remove some items that were construction based that were um caught in the RFP. Chris, I'm not sure if you're available to weigh in on what we're talking about. Is that, are those two paragraphs um more related to? Um, a construction type activity versus an O P M?
Uh, yes, they are. Yeah, there's nothing that that we would do that would be impacted by a town inspection or be rejected. Um, honestly, I didn't, I was more concerned about the uh. The technical scope um than reading into uh into this stuff. I apologize.
No problem. So I'm fine with that, Ralph. I'm fine with removing that. Is there anybody that has any issues with that? Um, because I do believe that he's right. It is linked to more construction base than it is to the work that we're looking for.
Okay, I I'd also scroll down to the second paragraph under subcontractor, subcontracting.
Yep.
Just just the word permitted. I I I take that in con in the context of requiring a building permit. Or is it? We have allowed the principal respondent. To subcontract a portion of their work. Do you understand the distinction between the two?
Yeah, I think the second is what my, what I had thought intended was the second. That essentially we are permitting them to subcontract.
I I would change permitted to allowed.
How about we just delete the word permitted?
There you go.
That'll work, too. Licenses and permits. Uh, licenses I get, perhaps. Permits, I don't know what permits are gonna be needed for this work. I don't think there's any. They may visit existing structures and and, you know. Uh, look things over, but there's no need for a permit to do that, other than permission from the school to enter the building. But as far as permit in this context, um we're talking building permit, electrical permit, plumbing permit, whatever. I would just strike and permits and um approvals and permits in the following sentence.
Mike, thought on land? A a permit for land?
I'm just, I was thinking through the same thing. I I think Ralph is right. Again, I go back to the question I asked before, which I think was answered by Chris, and that is. Do we anticipate any subcontractor or contractor engagement? Um, on the ground, such as environmental assessments or whatever that might require in this, in this question here. Do any of those things require an approval or a permit or a license required by the town or state to do? Um, or is that really a matter of professional licensing, which we would, anyway?
I think it's the latter, Mike.
So so as long as we're expecting whoever we hire to be professionally licensed in whatever field we engage them in. Then this particular paragraph doesn't matter, I think.
I think the licensing is important. I don't think the permits is is necessary there, that's all.
So so approvals and licenses could say, Ralph, you're just saying take out the word permits. That might be even easier.
I was, alright, on the title of that paragraph, take out and permits.
Yep.
And in the first sentence, strike approvals, permits and. So that we read, it shall have and provide. Proof of all licenses required by the town and or any state or federal authority.
Very good.
And then we got a, the word approval and permit in uh the last sentence.
So I'm gonna uh.
So I'm going to, uh, do devil's advocate here and just say that I, I think that what this is saying is, if the town requires any of those, then the contractor has to have them. But it's not saying that they have to have them. Uh, I, I just don't see a reason to take it out, whether or not it's going to be relevant or not here. Uh, it, it seems like some legal language that was probably added, so. I just think taking it out is more risky than leaving it in. Uh, again, I, I think Ralph's probably right that it's probably not relevant, but in the case that it is, uh, you know, I think it's wiser to leave it in.
Gary, I would agree with you. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
All right, um, so I apologize about, about all of that. Um, so I, I just want to say all of these things that were sort of drilling down and sort of wordsmithing each of these paragraphs. These were a standard, uh, language that was part of other RFPs that we had utilized to help form this RFP. So I, I agree with Gary. I think it would be more risky to pull it out. But I also agree with Ralph that it may not make sense, it may not be applicable in this RFP for our services, but I, I think we should, uh, keep what's shown here. And if Ralph, you have any other comments about the scope of what's in the RFP, I, I think we would welcome that. But I'm going to make a suggestion that we continue and move on and, um, and try to get a vote on this as edited herein.
That's fine. I have one last thing on insurance. I, I don't have a problem leaving licenses and permits in. I was just questioning it.
I'm on insurance, Ralph.
Okay, umbrella policy. I, I, I think the dollar amounts that we're showing here for the scope of work involved is, is very excessive. Five million dollar umbrella for what? Auto liability? It's not like we're having employee, other than the principals involved, we don't have employees who are workers who are coming on and off the job site. We don't yet have a job site. Uh, I talked with my attorney about that, those requirements, and he doesn't think the umbrella is necessary at all. The general liability should cover us. Uh, professional liability, absolutely. Uh, I carry a $2 million professional liability for a sole practitioner. Auto liability. I think that their own, uh, personal auto policy should cover any, any kind of incident where we may or may not see. And then under workman's comp, what, what does EL stand for? Employer's liability?
Yes.
Okay, when we use acronyms, would you please put WC in parentheses after workman's compensation? And EL in parentheses after employer's liability, just.
Ralph, again, Ralph, again, this was all standard, it, it was all standard documentation that, I, I mean, we went through this in our subcommittee meeting. So I, I'm a little surprised that we're sort of nitpicking the details of insurance requirements at this time.
You know, and our, in our work groups, we were focused on scope.
Right, and that's what we should be focusing on. If they have questions about the insurance requirements or any of the other background disclosure forms, any of that, they're going to ask the question.
Or they're not going to submit a proposal. Because they can't meet the insurance requirements for this type of work. Is that what you want?
What are you suggesting then? We modify the insurance requirements and we don't even have to what?
I'm questioning the magnitude of the minimum limits. I'm questioning the need for an umbrella.
Well, I don't know if anybody can answer that on the phone tonight, so. I'm not sure where we go from here, unless, Chris, you want to jump in again and maybe offer your uh, opinion about this, this section of the uh, requirements, is this standard? Uh, standard limits on, on, on insurance? Or, or do you think you wouldn't submit a proposal if we, if we issued this?
Uh, no, this is, this is very standard. These, all of these insurance limits are very standard for this, for what we're doing.
Okay, for construction or for submitting to getting us?
No, for construction, for, for construction, you'd see a higher umbrella. For construction, you'd see a 10, a 10 million or, or, or higher umbrella. For design, for owner's rep, for commissioning, you'd see a $5 million umbrella.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other feedback? Um, I, I think Ralph, that was your last comment. Is there any other feedback from anybody else on the committee? And I, I guess the question would be, Phil, are, are we making a recommendation to vote on this with the edits that we've made at this meeting?
Correct.
Okay, well, if there's no other discussion, uh, I would like to. I'm sorry.
I just, just cleaning up on, I see Phil's cleaning up the edits right now. I just want to, i- if you could scroll back to page five, Phil?
Yep, I'm just going to go through all the edits right now.
Okay, oh, great, okay, yep, great.
So the first adjustment was right here.
Yep.
It'll just, regardless of the postmarked date period, that other stuff will come out. Under questions and amendments, there's two sections here. I'll clean up and I'll make sure it's written twice. All questions should be submitted by, um, and I'll have the date in there, so it's clean. So it'll say January 7th, end of business day. And that will allow us the Monday to respond. So that'll be in both sections there.
That's good. That was my question, so thank you.
Um, we took out town of inspe-, uh, town inspection of work here. Both those sections will come out. The word permitted will come out. And I think that's it. Those would be the adjustments to the RFP.
And Phil, I apologize, I, I wasn't able to comment earlier. Was the committee, the RFP committee available the week of the interviews? I think we had the 26th and 27th. So if, if those two days are available for the four committee members that reviewed the RFP, we can keep those dates in there. I just wanted to double check with them, Gary and Ralph.
Well, I have the unfortunate, uh, luxury of being semi-retired, so, um, it's easier for me to say when I can't make something than when I can. Mike knows that.
Gary, could you do that?
Could you, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
January 26th and 27th, we were looking at, those, depending on the number of, um, people that would get an interview, we put in the date of January 26th and 27th.
Just give me one second, please.
Yep, yep.
And while, um, Gary's looking at that, Phil, if I can just ask Chris one more question, Chris, if you're still online. Um, how are you guys doing interviews lately? Have you guys been doing like both in person and Zoom, or has it been strictly Zoom?
Uh, it's really committee preference. We've done them both ways. We've done, we've done, yeah, we've done them in person with masks. And we've also done them, uh, fully remote, everyone on Zoom.
Are we, uh, talking about an evening here or a day, daytime meeting? What are we talking about?
I think that's up to you, Gary. I would assume it'd be, uh, you know, sometime afternoon to evening. That would be, because you gotta figure it's probably, you gotta give an hour for an interview-ish. So my, my thought would be evening.
Uh, yeah, I, I'll make that work. I'd like to talk a little bit more about when those would be, but yes, I can make those work.
Yeah, as long as we have the dates, I think that we, uh, it provides us a little flexibility.
Right.
And, and we've got the two dates on there, so people know.
All right.
And the only constraint I have is the 26th midday, you gotta block out an hour and a half. But if we're talking about evening, that's not going to be a problem.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to take a vote. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the draft, uh, request for proposal for owner's project manager as amended in tonight's meeting of December 20th, 2021. Is there a second? I can't see anybody, so I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I saw Mike McCoo raise his hand first and.
Okay, so I made a motion. Mike is the second.
Yep, you just need any final discussion now. Oh, yeah, I just want to thank the subcommittee for their diligence and putting this all together. It looks great. And, uh, just comment that I, Ralph was concerned about the insurance. I don't really understand it well, but I would like to have a subcommittee to have the discretion to act on that if someone couldn't meet it, to allow them to participate. Yeah, it's for, for me, my discussion point is really a thank you. You know, when you don't have, and what I'll say, an expert, you have a lot of local experts here, meaning the group together to try and write an RFP. Um, thanks to the committee, but especially thanks to, to the folks at CSG, um, for your feedback and the folks at Colliers. Just, just to support us in this process, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both, Chris and Colliers. Your, your feedback was, uh, instrumental in us finalizing this RFP, so uh, we wish you luck and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll be seeing you guys at the interview. All right, so. If there's no other discussion, um, can we take a vote? I, I can't see anybody, unfortunately, Phil, so, um.
I'll watch it if it's not unanimous. I'll, I'll call a roll call, Catherine.
Okay, um, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions?
I just want to confirm Brianna raised her hand on the participants page. Brianna, that's an aye, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that was everybody.
We lose somebody?
Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. All right, let's move on to new business.
Did we lose Anne? I think Anne was the one that dropped off earlier.
Anne dropped off. She said she'd be back. Is, could, the person that's on the iPhone, I don't, I don't know if that's a committee member. I don't know if it's Erica, but I'm just going to mute you. Is it Erica?
No, it's me, Catherine.
Oh, you're, it's sorry, I won't mute you then, sorry.
Yeah, don't mute me.
My apologies. Okay, sorry about that. Now she's muted. I did not do it, I swear.
I'm sorry, did I, I must have muted myself.
You did, that's all right. Next item is new business.
Yes. Okay, so everybody should have received the school building committee meeting schedule for the new year of 2022. This was presented as a draft. Thank you, Phil. So unless there's any objections to this, it follows the same first and third Wednesday of the month. So that's what this is. So this is what we're voting on tonight. So is there a motion on the table for uh, approval of this schedule for, meeting schedule for 2022?
I'm moved.
So moved.
Okay, Ralph is our first and Gary second. Any discussion?
This is going to be the same, uh, premise as, uh, 2021, where if there's really nothing on the agenda, we'll just cancel the meeting.
Yes, Ralph, that's correct.
Okay.
And in fact, I'll, I'll make the suggestion that we skip the January 5th meeting, but let's vote on this one. Let's vote on this. Any other discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor of approving the school building committee meeting schedule for 2022, say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Um, capital improvement project requests. Uh, I'm going to hand this one over to Phil. Uh, this one has to do with the funding, um, for our school building committee, and I'll let Phil walk, walk us through that. He did send a couple attachments to the committee members. Um, it was probably maybe just as confusing to you as it was to me, but again, I'll let Phil uh, sort of walk us through it. Thank you.
The, the board of finance chair can add something to whatever I miss. So every year, budget writers are, are required to submit their proposals to be on the five-year, uh, capital improvement planning. And so basically each budget writer submits their requests. It goes into that specific committee. And then that specific committee is tasked with, with taking all the projects, kind of prioritizing them um, and placing them in a year, one, two, three, four, or five. The only year that is funded is year one. And that's funded out after, you know, a referendum that goes, you know, a passing referendum. Just because something is in year two, the following year doesn't mean it's going to be in year two again. Um, they redo that, the plan often. Sometimes things do move up, but sometimes things just move out. So, um, the board of education had submitted the school building project, uh, the land request and the, um, the, uh, I'm missing, thinking of, of the, what am I trying to say? The, the, the professionals, the, you know, the, the whoever. Yeah, thank you, the consultants. They had submitted that. Um, and so the consultants was already approved for $100,000. That's the money that we'll be operating on now. That was in year one, so now that money is available. Now there's, if you want any additional funds, this committee, it should not come from, from the school building committee, or sorry, from the board of education. It should come through the school building committee if you want to ask for additional funds. So I, I pulled together basically what the board of ed had done and tweaked it just to modify it. Um, I'll put it up on screen in a second, but basically my suggestion would be to create two submissions. Um, one would be for a school building project. Um, a pre-K through eighth grade school building project, could be a renovation, could be a new building. Um, with, with the cost on there. Um, they put it wherever they want it, and it just keeps it on the radar. The second, um, proposal would be, uh, school building consultants, an additional $100,000. Again, you figure out what number you want that to be. And then those submissions have to go to, um, the, the, the committee, the CIP committee. Um, and they're due the end of this month. So we have to submit something. Let me pull up what the submissions were. Can you see the submission on my screen? Okay, so the first one was, um, and this is the form that everybody has to do. Um, if you want to make a submission, this is what goes in. And so basically it's got the fiscal year on it. Um, it basically has the title of the project. It's got Catherine's name on it is the, is the, you know, is the chair. Um, this would be a first submission because this is a brand new funding request. It's not a repeat because that was already funded, so this would be a new request. Um, I threw in some brief language here. You can tell me what you want to do. I tried to keep it very simple. I think it's, um, it's clear. You check the boxes that apply. If you want me to check something different. Um, describe the project primary benefits. You can you can write in what you want, impact that operating budget. I don't think there is any. Um, and then basically you, you put it in the year you're requesting. Just because we, you put something in the first year, year doesn't mean the capital improvement committee will put it in the first year. They may decide, you know what, we want it in year three. It's their discretion. It's only where you're requesting those funds. Um, and then if there's any, uh, grant reimbursement, and actually this should not be here, I don't think there is grant reimbursement on this. Um, and then your priority, your project rank, is it urgent? Is it desirable? What is it? So this is just the form that every operating or, you know, writing budget writer, if you want a big capital improvement project submits. What I missed, Mike?
Okay, can you scroll back up, Phil?
Sorry, Mike, did I miss anything?
I think you, no, I think you covered it and I believe that the, um, um, I believe that we had discussed in the past, the reason that that whole hundred thousand went to a town meeting was for the potential for reimbursement. So I think it was appropriate. It was in the form anyway. But I don't know if that has changed over time, whether we'd get reimbursed on the consultant work or not.
Yeah, Mike, I think we got further clarification on anything prior to referendum does not get reimbursed. Uh, it will get reimbursed with the project once it does go through the grant application.
Okay, so it could get reimbursed in the future.
Correct. Under, when it goes under, like, uh, if we have to extend the owner project manager with a construction project, it'll get reimbursed at that stage during construction when the grant application goes in. But anything prior to referendum, we get, we did get confirmation that that is not eligible.
So it's not eligible ever, even if we end up building the building, we can't go back and get reimbursement on that hundred thousand? Or we can later in the project, because those are two different things.
My understanding
Go ahead.
My understanding was that any, any, uh, dollars spent prior to referendum or prior to any grant application is not reimbursable. I don't, I, I don't believe it's proactive. I mean, a retroactive, but, um, I, you know, we could always revisit that and, and ask them, but I think for the purposes of this form, um, I, I mean, if, if, uh,
That matters, Catherine.
Yeah.
It does matter and, and Mike, it's something that we learned. Sorry, Peter, I see your hand. Mike, it is something we learned, um, this year is that anything pre-referendum, it has to be what, once you have a grant application approved, moving forward from that point, that's where the reimbursement comes in. Anything prior to that, that's not been approved is not grant reimbursable. That's our new understanding of, of the, uh, consultancy.
Okay, but you don't disagree that when we went to town meeting in December of two thousand and nineteen, it was specifically to get the taxpayers' approval of the uh, it was to get the taxpayers, um, whatever term you want to call it, they had to endorse it essentially so that it would be eligible for reimbursement. So at that time, we were working under the theory that this hundred thousand would be potentially reimbursed. That was the purpose of going to the town. Otherwise, it was not going, we were told it was not going to be allowed to put it into the application for reimbursement.
I think those are separate questions, Mike. I don't think the hundred thousand, I, I think you're partially right and, and partially incorrect. I think the, the item that's, uh, and I'd have to go back to the referendum statement, or sorry, the town meeting statement. One is to accept a hundred thousand dollars for building consultants. That would be the question.
Yeah.
That's one piece of it. Then the other pieces are in there about, you know, apply for a grant, things like that. I don't, I don't think those two were in the same question. If that makes sense.
Yeah, there were, there were five questions. I don't remember. Regardless, we'll just need to keep an eye on this as we move forward, whether things are reimbursable or not, because we want to get reimbursement for anything we can.
Absolutely. Sorry, Peter, I, I wanted to make sure I answered that.
Sure, thanks, Phil. Um, Phil, you mentioned that we would be submitting this now in our own right as the school building. So along those lines, can we modify the language to include, uh, building and renovation of a pre-eight school in the description of the project? Which is kind of consistent with our twin track Collier thing.
Just, just a comment, I, I kind of agree with Peter, but I do think that the board of education did vote exactly what's stated there.
Right.
But the charge of the school building committee is not limited to a new site.
Is that, you're right, Peter, I thought I did that, sorry. Um, and you're right too, Ralph. So this first part is really about what the BOE did. And then I think the second part needs to be, um, so we're requesting funding to hire the necessary consultants to continue your charge. Um, and we can just, I can add a statement in there that's right from our charge. Uh, it's either a new building or a renovation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, you know what, I'll do a new, um, pre-K to E, building or renovation. Does that clarify that, Peter?
Thank you, Phil.
Any other comments about, uh, this specific? This is again for just the consultants. I can go to the other one in a minute once you're done with this one. For months. All right, I will go to the second document. Uh, can you see, I just went to the district pre-K through eighth grade school. So, um, same thing in the beginning, requesting funds for either, and this is sorry, Peter, this is the one I did it in. For either a new pre-K to eight schools, renovated pre-K to grade eight school. Process has not been identified to date, but the SBC is requesting a placeholder be inserted into the CIP. So it's, it's, I think this number was based, this, I updated the, the percentage based upon the year. Um, and then that's the new, would be the new reimbursement. Um, and you put it in whatever year you want. I mean, they're gonna, honestly, they're gonna put it whatever year they want. Um, the only thing, and I, I, I think I mentioned this to Catherine that I'm unsure of is would you, when, if, if the group gets an owner's project manager on board and they want to, they do everything in four months, all the remarketing, all the decision making, I don't know if that's even reasonable, to be honest with you. I think it'd be um, pretty fast. But if they were to put in, if we were to put in a June of twenty twenty two application, I would think you would want this here. In, in that first year. If you are going to put in a, um, June of twenty twenty three application, you would want that in the second year. Um, Mike McCoo, I'm not sure if you have any thoughts on, on that for where it would be placed. I mean, either way, it would, it would be, it would have to go to referendum. It doesn't, it doesn't matter if CIP puts it in the first year. I just, I'm not sure what the, the implications are there.
Right, and the idea, Phil, as you mentioned earlier, is this is a placeholder so that we at least let the town know and the budget office know that this is what we think we're gonna need at this time. They may come back and say, we don't have the funding for twenty-two, twenty-three. We have to put it in twenty-three, twenty-four. But I, I think if you put it down, make the placeholder and then, you know, we have a deadline to submit this, so I think for the purposes of the form, um, this is, this is what, uh, is being recommended, so. And that number, Phil, came from the Friar's study estimates?
I believe so, yes.
Phil, um, as far as I know, um, because I'm on CIP, is we haven't met this year. Have you received any communication from the chair saying that there's a deadline to submit proposals or anything yet?
Yeah, end of this month.
Oh, okay. It's unfortunate being a member of the committee that I don't know that, but commentary aside, um, then that, that makes this more critical that we get it. Um, we get it moving. I think, I think you could even put in the explanatory material or when you're being asked at the CIP meeting, you could explain what this thought process is. We're in it because this, this is an ongoing planning and design process. It's a research process. It's complicated. We need the CIP committee to understand that this is coming down the road. And, and so here we are presenting it to you. Then CIP will do what they typically have done and said, they'll say, well, you know, will you need this forty-five million in year one or two? You say, no, there's no way we can be ready in year one or no way we can be ready by year three, whatever the answer is. And then they're gonna place it somewhere because, um, you, you can't adequately apply funding to a request that big anyway, until you're ready to a major bonding situation, which is, you know, a significant planning operation, particularly in looking at all the other priorities in town. And the CIP typically tries not to produce any of the five years with an unfundable total. Um, but of course, you know, a, as we have done in the past, we've put stuff out in year five to say, yeah, we know it's coming, but there's no way to pay for it, so we're putting it in year five and it is essentially unfundable in that format, but then we come to it over the ensuing years and try to plug it all in.
Right. And I think it's my, it, it just has to be submitted in someplace on the plan. I think if, either way, even if CIP put this in year one, I still think you're still gonna have a separate referendum for whatever you were gonna do, because that would be, be the final say if you, to do the bonding. I mean, that's what it would be about. So, um, I think as long as you have a submission and it's not even the dollar amounts, a general dollar amount, it's not real. It's, it's a, you know, multimillion dollar number as a placeholder until you have the real number. Um, that's what would be put forth, but at least it has a placeholder in for, uh, the plan. Anne has her hand up.
Welcome back, Anne.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry to have to leave. Um, the, I think that, um, number one, this would be reimbursable because this would be money that we would be using after the application has been approved. Is that correct?
Are you speaking for the full project, Anne?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I, my suggestion would be to put it in for the first year, just in the event that we have the application ready to go. I would hate to see the application be held up because the town doesn't have the funding ready to go. It can always be moved to the next year if the application isn't ready. Um, but that would be my thought.
I agree. Thank you, Anne. Does anybody else have their hand up? Is there any other discussion on, uh, the documents that Phil shared with us? There are two requests on the table. One is for the hundred thousand for additional, uh, or for, uh, the consultants. Uh, and then the forty-five and change. I don't have the number out front of me, but, um, for the actual cost for a project, um, for the future. If there is no other discussion, Phil.
Peter has his hand up.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to offer a, a different opinion on placement of year. Um, a hundred thousand makes sense to me completely to placeholder that, but it seems wildly optimistic to me that we're going to be uh, complete with our process between now and, and May. Um, and I, I think year two would be more, a more reasonable number and give CIP some, some leeway as well and makes more sense to me.
Thank you, Peter. Are you on the CIP committee?
No, I'm not. Former member.
I, I do have a question about that to, um, Peter's comment. If we do learn that we're not gonna make the grant application deadline for June and we have to push it out, is there any anything preventing us from notifying the, um, CIP committee that it, it can be pushed out until twenty twenty-three at that time? And then they can just make an, uh, an adjustment then? Or what, what's involved in that?
No, let me, I, I, and I want to explain this, Mike, just so, because I think you are gonna, are gonna explain it from a different perspective. Um, because you sit on that committee. Oh, the odd thing about this project is it is, i- i- even if they put it in year one or year five, they don't have the money for it. They're going to identify funds for other projects because they have the money for it. They're gonna say, this is what we need to create for taxes to fund all of these projects. This project is unique because you have to have a vote to bond this project. So whether you put it in year one or year five, no matter where it falls, it's going to need a special pot of money to be able to fund. It's not gonna come out of your, um, budget per se. I think the only thing, Mike, that might be different is by chance, it's, and, and I just don't, I don't see this happening, to be honest with you. Um, by chance, i- i- is I don't even think it matters. I- if it were to, um, be June of twenty twenty-two, you still have to have a separate referendum. It's not gonna impact the CIP process because it's a separate, it's just a totally separate pot of money that would have to be just for this that you fund, correct?
Yes. Yes, I, I think it's appropriate to request it in year one for, um, for conversation. But the potential of having all of these ducks in a row in the next six months is, you know, incredibly optimistic. I, I don't, I don't say that to be discouraging at all. Um, I just, it's incredibly optimistic that all these things could fall into place, that you could have a design well enough developed that you could price it. And then to engage the bonding process, all that other stuff, so. Um, I don't think we're gonna have to worry about it happening in the coming year, but I think we should, I think it should get presented. Uh, so that it, it's a, a, something that's conversed about in CIP and so that it's ready. If we can pull it together, that's great. Um, uh, but again, as Phil said, you know, it, you're gonna be looking at this in the CIP planning process. There are multiple sources of funding. You're gonna be looking at this as a budget because of the bonding package. Now, that doesn't mean that it's really off, completely off budget, because the bond has to be paid for somehow. So, so that then the, the money that, that says we're gonna do construction, um, starts off as an off budget, but then immediately you're gonna set a date when you have to start making payments on it, which are gonna be like hundreds of thousands of dollars a year or whatever it is to, to make the bond payment. So that, that becomes a budgetary issue. Um, you know, so you have a year or two afloat, maybe somewhere in there in the process before you start making payments. But certainly within the five-year plan, you're looking at making payments, which are gonna be big, big payments.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Shall we take a vote?
I have one quick question.
Okay, go ahead, Brianna.
Um, I was looking at the justifications and I see there is a statement in the, uh, box labeled impact on operating budget, so I was wondering why the justification of reduces operating costs is not checked off.
Hmm, good question.
Probably because the guy that did it probably just missed it. Probably because the guy that did it probably just missed it.
This is why we do these things in committee. Multiple eyes.
Mike, as I was doing my CIP items, I realized, oh my gosh, SBC has to do their own this year. So. Sorry about that. I will definitely check that box. And again, I'm glad to modify this or language. I just tried to. Good catch, though.
Thank you, Brianna. Any other feedback? So Phil, the, the edits that we have on that. The first one was basically adding that an addition piece to it. And so I, I think if we're gonna vote on these two documents, we make a motion to approve them. Based on the edits that were discussed in tonight's meeting.
Correct.
So is there a motion on the table for approving the capital improvement project requests? That were shown for the additional hundred thousand for consultants and the forty five million plus for. A future school project. As amended in this evening's meeting. I can't see people's face.
So moved by Mike.
So Mike.
Anne seconded.
Any discussion, additional discussion?
Anne has her hand up.
Catherine, are you placing those both in 22, 23, the first year?
I think that's how, I think that's how Phil had them filled out.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Question.
Because this often comes up in CIP, when you're asking for money, CIP will ask what you've been doing with money you've gotten already. So I think. It's good that we're moving along with the current RFP process. I think we need to make sure we stay on that. Because when we come to the CIP meeting to. Defend this request, we're gonna need to answer what we've done with the hundred thousand we already have if we're asking for more money. And that will, you know, and showing that progress will be important in explaining. What we're doing with the current money and why we may, how we justify asking for more money. So we should keep pulling and be ready to answer that question.
Thank you, Mike. Ralph?
I agree with Mike. The difficulty that we're having, that we will have is we have no idea what we're gonna spend for our OPM at this point. And to, to be able to quantify the numbers for CIP would certainly be helpful. In explaining what we've done with the hundred grand we already have.
Well, we're gonna know in like three weeks.
Yeah.
Perhaps yes, perhaps no. Hopefully, yes.
Okay, let's take a vote. We've got a first and a second, unless there's any other discussion. Let's take a vote. Any, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any names? Any names?
Yep, so you gotta do a roll call.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. So would you mind doing the roll call? I, I just, I can't see everybody on the screen.
No problem. Gary Anderson?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Peter?
Nay.
Mike?
Aye.
Anne?
Aye.
Ralph?
Aye.
Brianna?
Aye.
And Justin, did I get you?
No, but I'm a yes.
Okay, so that's. All to one. Motion passes.
Well, I, I don't know if I asked for any abstentions, but I, well, I guess it doesn't matter when you do a roll call, right?
Yeah, everyone was either yay or a, a no or an abstention.
Okay, sorry. Okay, down to present to speak. So Chris, if you're still with us, if you'd like to. If you'd like to share your thoughts. Or anybody else for that matter. Would anybody like to speak on present to speak?
I don't know if present to speak is the, the right time for this. Mike had noted that in town meeting. When we approved to form this. Committee, we had talked about reimbursement. And that was not explicitly on the call, Mike.
Yeah, I know. I would, while we were in this meeting, I was trying to look back at the old calls and, and. I can't, I can't find that. I remember very clearly discussing it. I remember people in the meeting that part of the reason we have to tell you about this as taxpayers is because. If we have an application for reimbursement, we don't want this to be excluded. I remember the discussion, but you're, you're right. I don't find it on a call for the meeting.
No, I was looking back over the minutes and I can't find it on the call. We, we were just asking three questions.
What was the date of that meeting?
Hold on. January 30, 2020.
Okay. I was in the December 2019 meeting still.
Ah, that might make a difference.
That's part of the problem. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna open it up one more time for a present to speak. If there's anybody hanging on. If Chris is available and he wants to speak, feel free. All right, I again want to thank everybody for being on the call tonight. This was a special meeting. And I, I appreciate the patience and understanding. And as everybody knows, a lot going on. I know some people aren't feeling well. So, you know, definitely thank you for being on the call. And again, I apologize for my connection. I, I don't know what was going on, but. But anyway, I wanted to also make a suggestion that we, our next meeting be. What is it? The 19th of January instead of January 5th? And if there's no objections to that, seeing how it's only about a couple of weeks away. We could, we'll go ahead and send a cancellation out for the agenda for January 5th.
Catherine?
Yeah.
Just a question on that. Do you anticipate anything in this world of the RFP that we might have to deal with?
I don't actually, because questions would be due like the 7th. And so, I mean, we'll still be working in the background to questions that they have. But for any discussion purposes, I don't think there's nothing urgent on the agenda for the 5th. So.
Very good.
Okay, so our next meeting will be January 19th of 2022. And. Is there a motion on the table to adjourn this meeting?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
I meant to say so moved.
All right, so Mike.
I'll second.
Ralph?
Catherine, this is Chris too. Just before everybody gets off, I apologize. I was talking before and I was on mute. I'm all set though. I hope everybody has Merry Christmas and. I look forward to seeing you guys in January.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, everybody and. Have a nice Christmas.
Aye.
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 Let's vote. Meeting. All in favor, say aye.
There you go.
We already got that. Aye.
He's 17.